We'll like to call this meeting to order. How's that? All right. I would ask sir if that time, if this time you can do roll call for us, please.
Here. Here.
Robert.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
Here. All right. Second item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. And does anyone have any changes to the proposed written agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the agenda be approved as presented. I'll second that.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, all in favor of the agenda as written. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Agenda is approved. Next item number three is the minutes from the January ninth meeting, which was a rather simple meeting. We didn't have any, any applications, but we did have a few things to clarify in the beginning of the year. So I looked it over. I thought that the minutes looked pretty good to me. Did anyone else have any other changes to those minutes? It was Jim Baugh and Richard, I believe, the three of us.
I thought they were good.
I didn't have any changes.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
Well, I move that the minutes of the meeting of January nine, 2025 be approved.
I second the motion.
Okay. We, the three of us, if you're in favor of approving the minutes, that way signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. That passes. So the minutes are approved from the January ninth meeting. We, our item number four is when we have public comments. Public comments at this time are anyone that wants to make a comment, comment on anything they would like to make a comment on. It can be on this evening's application. It can be on anything you might want to make. So at this time, is there anyone in the audience or I don't think we're out, are we online for anybody else other than David? Okay. That would like to make any comments?
Can't be able to come in during.
Yeah, yeah. Anyone? Guess not. All right. Then we will close public comments of item number four on the agenda. That takes us to any unfinished business, which is none. And new business, item six, which is forty Butler Street. We have a dimensional variance request. And at that time, or this time, I guess I'd like to have Luke provide us with your overview.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, good to see you guys again. It's been a little while. This is very nice. So tonight we have Kevin Phillips from the Singapore Yacht Club here with us. And he is here with an application to replace an existing fence at forty Butler Street. The fence, it's, it's important to note that the, they're not proposing any changes to the fence, any dimensional changes. It will remain the same height and it will have the same footprint. But it doesn't meet a specific regulation that he's here to apply to vary from. According to our ordinance on waterfront fencing, any fence within twenty-five feet of our waterfront may be no more than four feet high, may be made of wrought iron, chain link lattice, or other open style fencing. But most importantly, it has to have at least a six to one ratio of open space to solid material. The proposed fence does not meet the open space requirement, which is why the application is before us tonight. The situation is a little more complex than just a fence that doesn't meet our open space requirements because the, the fence itself is both a waterfront fence, but it's also a pool enclosure fence. Because of this, there's a few different governing bodies that have standards that need to be met. And that's part of the issue. You, you know, you try and meet one, you're going to run into issues with another and vice versa. Couple of the other standards that come into play is Michigan Building Code, which requires pool fences to prevent a four inch sphere from passing through any part of the fence. And Eagle Regulations, Eagle regulate public swimming pools. And I did contact Eagle directly to ensure that that would count as a public pool, and it does. Their regulations state that a fence must not provide easy footing for climbing. Just kind of vague, but it does create a bit of conflict. Our zoning obviously encourages an open style fence near the water to protect the view. That's sort of, you know, the, the intent behind, that's the spirit of the ordinance. We want to protect the view and that's why we are, we have these open, this ratio of open space to solid material. But those same designs like wrought iron or chain link do make it easier to climb and do not satisfy the state requirements, nor do they satisfy Eagle requirements. Go back to what I just said on the spirit of the ordinance. I believe, like I said, the goal of the open space ratio is to preserve visibility and access to the waterfront. In this case, this fence already exists. And I don't know the exact open part, I, I don't know the ratio of open space to solid material on that fence, but it's, it's pretty close to solid as is. There's not much of a view going through. And so I don't think this proposal goes against the ordinance any more than what is already in place. It's also surrounded by two pretty large buildings as is. So really, you know, the proposal wouldn't block any more view than is already blocked. With that being said, Kevin is here and can answer, answer any questions. We also have Trent and Dave here, if you guys are too smart for me. So. There you go.
All right. All right.
Everybody, Kevin Phillips, once again, Singapore Yacht Club. I am not a resident of the city. I live out in the township, but I've been a lifelong resident here. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to review our request. There is a little bit more information. This, it is forty-eight inches is your height limit. Can't go any higher. Building code is forty-eight inches. So we have no leeway at all there on height. It's, it's very difficult. They also say in their rules that we have to be two inches off the ground. And then we have to have a member to go across. And then we have to have uprights and then we have to have another one. And if those are more than forty-eight inches or forty-five inches, which the math is perfect, you can't have any error, then we have to have them one point seven five inches together. So it's even, even tighter than the four inch sphere that we're talking about. So it's so very difficult to match everybody's request and everybody's rules. So that's why we're here. We're not trying to do anything. We're not trying to block any view. I think the only view that's blocked is the people in the pool that won't be able to see out of the pool along the waterfront. So we talked to our landlords. We do have a triple net lease there. We're responsible for that whole area. They, they like the proposal of the solid fence on their side to keep their patrons that are at the restaurant a little bit more protected from us people out there in the pool that might not be so pretty. But they're, they're all in favor of the new fence and they're actually directing us to make, make improvements. So that's our, that's our true goal to keep that place looking nice, meet all the requirements and provide a good place for everybody.
Kevin, if I was understanding, your comments were that your fence, the way you propose it at forty-eight inches would be at the forty-eight inches exact is what you're saying.
Yeah, it's exact. It has to be both ways.
So if I can, if I can add to that, I think his point is that because of the three different governing bodies that are going to be involved, both the minimum height and the maximum height for this fence is four feet. So he has no, it's going to be four feet. Yeah, there's no leeway there.
Yeah.
It is right there. It's just I'm trying to guess, I'm pointing out how stringent all of these rules are working together. Men's and maxes are these exact same number for all, for us.
I, I would mention as well, I'm sorry Bob, just to cut you off, but it did receive approval from the historic district, who obviously have completely separate standards from yourselves, but did review for character and general effect on public.
And Kevin, it's in exactly the same area. You're not expanding or diminishing either way?
Nope, staying right where it's at. And it's really, the only part we're looking for the variance is the very front, which is the boardwalk. And there's six feet after there's a dock shed there, which actually has an ice machine in front of it right now. And it's that six feet that we're looking for the, for the variant. So it's the front side, which is the walkway for our beautiful boardwalk, has dock boxes along it. It's, it's covered up. I, I didn't do the math, but I probably thirty percent covered up as it is right now. And then the other part is covered up by an ice machine. So I don't think we're doing anything that'll be, that'll be different than what, what it looks like right now.
Question.
Go ahead, Richard.
Is now, is this a wooden fence or is this a metal framework? I mean, I've seen the pictures and it looks like it might be a metal framework with, with wood or is it a synthetic?
Nope. To get by or get everybody's approval through the historical, we, that is wood. That'll be a cedar, tongue and groove cedar put together like you see there. And then it is a steel frame going down around it. There'll be six foot sections. It looks really tall there. I don't know if that's a, that, that looks taller than four foot. That, this is currently ours. That is exactly four foot. And this will make it to match.
Of course, not that it's really in our purview, but as I was looking at it, I was thinking it's going to be very difficult to make, to maintain this, to make it look nice. I mean, you guys are the boat people and so you know that. And, but that's very difficult to.
Right.
I mean, it, it, it takes really yearly maintenance, which is never going to happen probably.
Well, we would have liked to go on synthetic. We're not going to, we would have liked to had it that way, but we couldn't. They wouldn't let us do that way. So that is a prefinished cedar, number two cedar that's going inside there.
That was a question I was going to ask. So that's a cedar that's pre-treated, stained?
Yep, both sides stained.
Okay.
It'll be a solid stain, so we, a little bit more longevity to it. The top, it's kind of a nice system. We looked hard, we looked, did quite a bit of looking for it. That top bar can come off. It's, it's actually a little bit modular. So we could take that top bar off, slide those all out, refinish them, slide them back in and put the top back on if we have to do that and finish it. But yeah, that's, that's a consideration, but there was no other choices but wood or a steel product to meet the historical.
Okay. I think you guys have done a nice job at preparing the information and doing the schematics and, and pictures and drawings. It makes it pretty understandable as to the area and what it's going to look like. Good to hear that you have historic prior.
Yep. Historic approval.
Yeah. Chris, you got any questions of Kevin right now at this time or anything?
Just to confirm, the old fence doesn't meet the minimum ratio of six parts.
No.
So.
No. Yeah, we have a, we have a section on non-conforming structures, the kind of maintenance and, and alterations you can do to those. Obviously, the old fence, while you cannot see through it, I think it's clear from the design that it's not one hundred percent solid. And we're going to solid. So I mean, this, this would be an increasing, it would increase the non-conformity. I mean, you could argue that neither meet, so does it really increase the non-conformity? But if we're going from ninety-nine percent solid to a hundred percent solid, I would say it does. And I, I think, you know, it would have been unjust of me to approve this as some kind of maintenance or whatever when this body should, in my opinion, clearly see this kind of thing, so.
Okay. All right, Kevin, if we have any further questions, we'll close the public portion here and go into our deliberation and have some discussions. And if there is something, we'll get back to you. Appreciate your information. Well, anybody have any offering comments?
Yeah. Looking at all these letters, I see nothing that's disagreeing with what they want to do. So in letters of approval, sounds good, looks good. I mean, from a community standpoint, and the eagle thing that's all in there. So I think this, the community itself is looking to think that it could be worth it.
Yeah, it's a situation where it isn't an existing non-conforming thing, but it is also a maintenance, I guess, issue of a non-conforming. It is to me pretty unusual where it's, you know, with, with pools and a, in a, on a waterfront pool, there's no pools closer than that one to the waterfront. And I can understand if someone has a pool and maybe is looking for a variance, let alone just for a pool to be closer than twenty-five feet sometimes is, is one issue, but, and then the fence, this is just the fence issue at this point. You know, it's, so I can't imagine in this case that you're, that the open opacity is, is a a benefit for the public or for the end user, for the customer at this point, you know, property owner and Singapore Yacht Club. So it seemed to be one of those things that privacy fences, or at this point, there is a, there is a reason for privacy on both sides, a public and the, and the user.
Yeah. It, it's definitely a specific enough situation, not only that the pool is so close to the water and therefore the fence again has multiple different governing bodies, but also the fact that there is already an existing fence. Just because there's a pool that's next to the water doesn't mean we all of a sudden need to say, okay, fine. Well, these guys have a solid fence. You can have one too. They already have a solid fence.
Right.
You know?
Well, I guess in the history of it, there's no real variance showing before, right? That you know of, that was ever given?
Oh, no. I don't believe so.
Yeah, I don't either.
I mean, you know, it's a pretty old city, so we've got plenty of non-conformity. It, it's never, it's never a surprise to see non-conforming structures or uses for that matter, so.
Now, if, if some, if they were to, yeah, I mean, if somebody was, if they were, the homeowner, homeowners, here we go, the property owners in this case, were to choose to take, remove that pool someday, which would be a whole different situation. The fence would have to be part of that probably at removal. It's not like we're giving a variance to a fence without a pool. It has to be with a pool.
I, I think that, you know, the variance is for the fence to be built, you know, per the plans. I, I don't think that removing the pool in the future would necessarily require that the fence come down. But I do think that if the fence were to come down, what would, you know, for any amount of time, what would go back up would have to be compliant with our regulations. I suppose you, you, you could potentially stipulate that, you know, the fence may remain in place while the pool does, but I don't think that that would be a hundred percent necessary.
Well, I think that, you know, making the fact that it's, you referenced earlier as the, as the plan is indicated, whether, you know, the defense would be, if we were to approve it in the area that is shown on the plan and, and that it is approved for that area with a pool and this conjunction with is important. The proposed written motion has, in, in general, it works. It says, it says twenty-five feet, within the twenty-five feet setback. It doesn't give a, a dimensional issue. In other words, we're not saying we're giving them a, a five foot variance or a twenty foot variance. It just says within the twenty-five feet. Now typically, when we do a, a variance, we like to specify the amount of distance that is being varied.
Right.
My, one way of looking at it, I'm not disagreeing with the way it's written. I'm just saying, because it does work, that within the twenty-five feet, it just isn't specific as to, but because it varies from, there's, it goes along the side.
Yeah.
It's probably in the twenty-five. So there's areas that could be a, you might give it a two foot variance, you might give it a twenty foot variance, depending on how it wraps or something like that. So I think that's maybe the, was the intent of the way that was proposed.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the, you know, what we sort of contemplated was that this is, this is a pretty specific request. They want to vary from the section of the fence regulations that state that fence is within twenty-five feet. So I, I don't think we necessarily need to say that this section of the fence is going to be six feet within the waterfront. We're just saying that any part of the fence that falls under the regulations, you know, twenty-five feet to the water is essentially allowed to be, that's, that sounded kind of complicated, I'm sorry about it. But I, I don't think we would need to necessarily stipulate exactly what amount of fence on either side would, would receive the variance, just that this property would, would be allowed to vary from this section is essentially what I'm saying. And, and Dave was about to talk and he's probably going to say what I said, but clearer.
That was the exact same thing I was going to say. It is just because that solid fence is not allowed within twenty-five feet, that we're, we're just saying that the solid fence, we're allowing the variance to allow the solid fence within twenty-five feet of the waterfront, because that's the only place on the site where that's not permitted by the ordinance. So.
I had asked you this another time, I think. There is additional fencing that's put, and it's going to be put around the underside of the pool too, I believe, to upgrade the, all of the fence. And, and is that to be, but it's, it's outside the twenty-five foot boundary. So we're not dealing with that. But is that a four foot fence as well? Or is it, it's not six foot, is it?
No, my understanding is that the whole fence will be four feet tall.
There's, I noticed that there's a, a thing there, like a, maybe what, eight foot section or something?
I think, I think it's about nine foot. Yeah, close to there.
Right. And then, and so there's that anomaly. And then it goes back to four feet. And, and like you were saying, you know, ordinarily I'd be picking this thing all apart, but, I mean, try to figure it all out, but it's, it's such an unusual landlocked kind of a situation and also there already. And it's just, you know, there's not a lot of, there's not a view shed here for the public of any, anything. And so it's kind of, it's rather unusual. So, but, but I think it will look better to have it be four foot rather than scaling back up to, to six. Although the, yeah, I mean, I went down and looked at it and whatnot and, you know.
Yeah, it is, it will be as is. We do have a little bit of work on that corner to make it a little bit, it's got, so it'll be, it'll be, that is the only solid part.
No, good. Depends on where they set the laser, where they start, right?
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Well, any other discussions? If not, I'd like to go through and read the standards.
Yeah, I've got a couple of points, sir.
Okay.
This, this particular issue waterfront fences is very sensitive. It's detailed in the master plan and the zoning ordinance. So I went back to the master plan to say, what does the master plan say about this? Because the zoning ordinance is developed from the master plan as a way to accomplish the goals and objectives of the master plan. And the master plan's sections deal directly with this. They say today's waterfront activities are dominated by tourist and pleasure craft needs. And consequently, how the waterfront is used will be of crucial importance to the future of the tri-community area. Says yet there is strong public opposition to walling off the waterfront, so zoning ordinances should be reviewed to ensure they adequately prevent unwanted development. Opportunities to enhance the waterfront should be seized. Parks and open spaces should eventually be linked with other public spaces. Additional access to the waterfront should be required when available. Street ends, parks should not be lost through neglect or inaction. And the summary is visual access from public thoroughfares and walkways should be maintained in all new waterfront development. So that's a very strong statement. And then from that, you get the downtown waterfront preservation district, which says the downtown waterfront preservation district is intended to manage and regulate development and redevelopment projects to ensure views of the Kalamazoo River and to encourage and incentivize access to its shoreline. So when I was looking through this, the, the whole, it's, it summed up visual access from public thoroughfares and walkways should be maintained in all new developments. That's the, the underlying driving principle there. And when, when I look through this thing, I don't see this fence impeding that because the fence, the, the, the public walkway there is the, the walkway along the front, the boardwalk. The boardwalk is outside the fence and this fence does not seem to interfere with the tri-community master plan or the zoning ordinance, because it's not blocking anybody's view. This is a unique lot.
Right.
The only views it's blocking is from the people who are sunbathing at the pool and it's separating those, those people from the general public walking down there. So I, I don't see this in any way as, as variance to what the master plan is asking for.
I would agree. Yeah.
Can I add as well? I mean, I like what it says there about opportunities about, opportunities to enhance the waterfront should be seized.
Yeah.
I think we, you know, the fence that's there, totally fine. Not, you know, but the one that's proposed is definitely a lot prettier is all, you know, all I'm saying.
Yeah. I would agree with that, just what you said on that, the enhancement, what they're looking for there here in the proposals, that the new fence is so much prettier than what the old fence. I walk by there all the time and I look there to the left and nah, I think this would really look good for, not only me, but it's the community and everybody else. It's all of our tourists that come into town to enhance our downtown, to make it look the prettiest that it can.
That area gets a lot of tourist.
It does.
Activity.
It does. Tremendous.
You want to see the boats. That's why people come to town.
They do.
Well, the boardwalk's higher than the ground, so if you're three foot five, you can look into the pool anyway, so.
I know. You sure can, I know. You nail great dots. It's okay. Make the fence, fence solid.
Okay. Well, that's good information. That was, confirms the, you know, there are times where it works, understand what they're trying to accomplish. In this case, it really is not exactly that way.
It seems, seems to satisfy all the requirements for where, where the city wants to go.
Yeah. Okay. Well, how about we work through the, go through the standards? And Jim Buck, why don't I start with you on my right? If you want to take number one. And everybody has their standards right here. Chris, if you've got yours right there, yep. Start with, we'll have Jim to start with number one.
That strict compliance with area setbacks, front edge height, bulk and, or density would unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or would render conformity unnecessarily burdensome. And the comment here, which, which is written, I agree with. Strict compliance with the zoning requirements for an open style fence with a minimum ratio of six parts opens base to one part solid material would unreasonably burden the property owner by preventing the replacement of a compliant pool safety barrier required by state code. State regulations for pool safety require fencing with rails that prevent a four inch sphere from passing through, which is incompatible with the open style design mandated by section one five four dot one four three, paragraph F six. While a solid fence is not required to meet state code, it could be considered reasonable to allow the replacement of the existing fence with a similarly solid fence. Mr. Chairman, I think this standard has been satisfied with the plans that have been presented.
I believe that follows all of our prior discussions, if everybody else thinks so. All right. All right. Rich, would you like to go? Richard, over here. All right. All right. Rich, would you like to go? Richard over here?
Right, yes. Oh, before that, uh, was there any, uh, did we need to have any more public comment or anything?
Not at this time, not since we start these deliberations, we can't.
No, regarding the application, we technically do have, if there's anything else regarding the application, but.
You're right, Richard. We should have asked.
Don't know if anybody, not online or here, so.
All right.
All right, uh, number two, that variance would do substantial justice to the owner as well as to other property owners in the district, or whether a lesser relaxation would give substantial relief and be more consistent with justice to others. I referenced this staff report, uh, granting the reference would do substantial justice to the property owner by allowing for one, for one replacement of an aging existing fence that ensures pool safety. The replacement fence would be similar in appearance and location to the existing one and will not increase visual or physical impact on adjacent property owners.
Okay, that's a, probably agreed also.
So I would agree with with, with number two.
I agree that it's satisfied.
Yeah.
I would agree too.
All right, Dick Bont, would you like to take number three?
That the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances of the property and not to general neighborhood conditions. And the report here, this is unique situation based on the location of the pool on a waterfront lot, which triggers two somewhat conflicting requirements. Few properties in the applicant, applicable zoning district contain pools within such proximity to the waterfronts, making this a rare and specific circumstance that is not broadly shared, which I would tend to agree with this comment.
That definitely, definitely meets that one, in my opinion.
I agree.
Hey. And Chris, you wanna read the last number four?
Problems not self-created or based on personal financial circumstances. Comment is, the issue is not self-created or based on financial circumstances. The need to replace it is driven by conditions and mandatory states that, safety regulations. The applicant is not requesting an expansion, encroachment, or height increase, and that satisfies.
Yeah. Yeah, where sometimes this is a, number four is a stickler on some, some applications that definitely say that it beats this one pretty clearly.
I would agree.
Yeah. Well, uh, based on our, our review and, and following some of the comments that were provided, our, our legal and consulting firms, uh, seems to be like the board was leaning in that way. We would look towards a, uh, a motion. I know, Jim, you had maybe some, uh, thoughts and some additional uh, things that you showed me here that you might want to include in that, in that statement, is to make a motion. If you're wanting to add that or not, or.
Yeah, let me, uh, I'll, I'll make a motion here and then we can discuss it and see if we like it or not.
Okay.
I move to approve a variance to allow a solid fence exclusively for swimming pool screening within twenty-five feet of the waterfront at Forty Butler in accordance with the applicant's existing dimensional definition and materials based on the following findings. Step, status.
That, for the comments of the standards?
The standards one, two, three, and four have all been evaluated and standard, and approved and satisfied.
Now Sarah, there might be, I know you write pretty fast. Do you feel, you good with all that?
Easy. Easy.
Cause he added some words to that. You want to have any, any comments or discussions of the additions, if you want to repeat or anything like that for a second?
I would second it, unless any other changes you want to have made.
I have no, I have no question. Chris, you either?
Like it is, right.
All right, all right. So Jim, or Jim made the motion and Dick, uh, Dick Bont has seconded it. So with that said, then Sarah will ask for a vote.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right. Looks like you can fence it up. Yeah, hit fencing.
Um, when is that fencing taking place? Other safety stuff will be put around while you're doing that?
Okay. Oh, I thought you were gonna put captain, five coats of captain's gloss varnish on that.
Yeah, I'll reach out to you with, uh, just some more information tomorrow, kind of like rideaway permits and things.
Okay. All right. Well, good luck, Kevin. Well.
Yeah, yeah, well, a, a lot of hoops to jump through this.
Yeah, well. Well, that's, you, you can blame, you can blame Luke. You can blame Luke.
Yeah, it's fine.
Good.
Very nice. Thank you, Kevin.
Well, it's nice, it's, it's nice that you understand that it, there are, there are, uh, reasons and, uh, share that with all your members to say you did, you did it the right way. You didn't do it the wrong way.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Well, all right. Let's see. That takes care of our new business. And, um, that takes us to our, uh, communications on number seven.
Yeah, I, um, I definitely want to say, uh, welcome to, uh, one of our newest members, Chris Raphael.
Yeah.
Uh, and also to another one of our newest members, uh, Matt Harley, who's in the audience, um, who is a, uh, alternate. Um, so we, we have six ZBA members in attendance tonight, which is very nice. We're used to three around here, so six is pretty great. And, you know, one of the funny things that me and Ryan keep talking about is, since I've been here, we've had a lot of, a lot of interesting cases, lot of, lot of new situations for me. And I keep saying something along the lines of, when am I just gonna get a fence? And this is my fence, and it took us, it took us four or five months to get it through, but, um, it's, yeah.
You got an easy fence, not a perfect, because chances aren't that easy.
Yeah, well, that's true too. So, but that's, that's all I have for you. Welcome, Chris, and welcome, Matt.
That's why I brought up the, the public comment thing. I thought the gentleman out there might have a public comment, but and I didn't, I didn't realize he was
That was our, is our.
Good job.
All right, um, well, ZBA members' comments. I have one, only reminded me with Matt's situation. And I'm gonna go back. I know sometimes we lose track. The, I think it was with you, Luke. I know Ryan was here, but, um, anyway, we, at one time we talked about as far as alternates, uh, participating or being part of a meeting, not that they can vote if, if they want to. The question became, you know, part of someone like Matt being here, which is great for you to, you know, share in the process and understand and, and get a little more about what goes on. That, that sometimes it having the alternates, although they can't vote, the question came down to, my experience over the years, we used to have alternates attend even though they couldn't vote, but they got exposure that way and they learned how it worked. And so I guess the question was, is that still a policy that you guys still believe that they cannot sit in, uh, on discussions, or does that go back to a date?
Currently, yeah, Trent's ready to go. Uh, yeah, so currently we have obviously five, five members and two alternates. I do believe you have the ability to.
Oh, yeah, uh, Jim's still our other alternate.
Yes, yeah. I, I believe you have the ability to, to amend your policies. Am I right in that thinking, Trent?
Yeah, I, I believe so. I haven't looked into this issue in a while, but I, I think you, uh, there are ZBAs with, with more members than, than five. As far as letting them vote, you know, that would, that would be necessary to, in order for them to vote, would be to amend it to a, a higher number. I don't know that there'd be an issue with them participating, uh, per se. And I, and I think that an amendment to the ZBA bylaws, um, you know, there's already a section that speaks about al- alternates and, and potentially we could amend that to allow them to deliberate. But that's, I mean, something we could look into if that's something that we want to do.
I would, I would appreciate that. And, and my reasoning is there's a learning process. So if, if an alternate participates, doesn't mean they can vote, you know, depending on how many, if there's, you know, the regular members are here to vote. As a majority, that's understandable. If you're short, then they, then they vote. But what happens is they get used to being in front of the public. They get used to asking questions and understanding how it works. And they may have a good opinion or something through a deliberation that we may not look at. And that is part of becoming comfortable with the, a board. And, you know, or Chris, we, you're, you're thrown into it. I mean, so to speak, your first meeting, and that's great. But it, you know, it takes a while to get a feel for everything. And I think it, it helps the alternates to, to learn. But, so I appreciate that, Trent. Just check it out, but.
Yeah, yeah. So actually I pulled up the MZA real quick here, and it does say that zoning board of appeals shall be composed of not fewer than five members, uh, if the local unit has a population of five thousand or more. And so that, you know, I think, I think the state law would allow it. I, I'd have to look into the ordinance to see if, if the ordinance mandates five, um, members as well, that'd be a little trickier to amend the ordinance. Not that we couldn't do it, but be a little more of a process than just amending the bylaws. So, but it is something we can look into.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, well, Trent, I know several years ago when Bob and I first started on zoning here, that goes back fifteen years plus.
More for me, Dick.
But anyway, we did have alternates that did sit in and just sat.
I did, yeah.
Yeah, I did, I did in my first meetings.
Huh?
They didn't vote?
They, no, no, we would.
But they did sit in to participate, to see what was going on, to get a feel, exactly what Bob was saying.
Ever, ever since the mid nineties that I joined, that's the way it's been, but.
I should have said twenty years ago, but I didn't want to say that.
I'm, I'm about, oh, twenty-seven or so.
Over twenty.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna add more context here, because I'm, I'm looking at the, the zoning ordinance, and it does, uh, section one-fifty-four point one-five-one A says, uh, membership of the zoning board of appeals shall consist of five members. So it, it would require an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
To have them sit in.
To sit in?
And not vote?
Not vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I was talk, I was talking about voting. Yeah, to sit in, I think we could do that with the bylaw amendment, to just let them sit at the table.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay.
Maximum of five.
So we could have them.
The maximum of five, minimum of three.
Right.
Yeah. That's great.
No.
This is generally friendlier than a condo board.
Can get a little touchy.
Yeah, there's never a problem with yacht clubs or condos, right?
Yeah, I also think it's a good idea. I, I definitely don't think we should, uh, increase the membership, for example, because obviously we've had plenty of.
No, no, I'm not trying to do that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, having people sit in, I think is also.
It's just that with, you know, example with Matt being up here and participating and ask, you know, if he had a question, he, he could do that up here and, you know. So there, there is a, a way, reason of doing that. Okay. That was my, my personal thing here on, now that we've got a, a full board and two alternates back. I mean, that's the way it, they get to learn. I mean, they could sit around and come to one, you know, be in one meeting a year and never really get a full feel for it.
And why I say that, Luke, is that I'm gone four months of the year. So it's important, I think, that alternates do get here and, and be a part of it.
For sure, yeah.
Be comfortable.
Sounds good. We'll look into it and we'll, uh, we'll, we'll present some information back to you guys.
Thanks. Any other ZBA member comments? You have one.
Do, uh, these appeals ever go beyond a single meeting?
Uh, yes. If we, if we've, we don't find, uh, that we have either, a lot of times, sometimes a, a simple answer to that might be, we may not have enough information, or the accurate information, there, there's something missing. Uh, we may feel that there's not enough information here for us to make a decision. Uh, that's probably the two most common ways. Once in a while, we may just feel like, you know, I don't know if there's, there's another one in there somewhere, but most of those are the situations that we just don't feel that, uh, maybe there's a legal opinion we would like to have answered before we make a vote. So it's not uncommon. I mean, it happens.
So makes it all the better that the alternatives are in attendance for.
Yeah, well, and see, and there, there's a situation where, let's say, you know, then if they're not, if they weren't part of the original, there's, there's a good enough for Trent, but if they weren't part of the original, but then, then somebody's gone, then they're setting in, then now they're involved. So it's, it's a good reason for that, yeah. Yeah, that's, it happens.
It does.
Yeah.
That's all I mean.
Especially the complicated ones, we, we might go slower on, if there's a lot to, lot of risk. Um, but if all of a sudden, I'm not picking on Luke, I'm just saying somehow they, there was a piece missing that really just didn't give us clarity, then we would just say, we'll wait, wait a month. I mean, that's not very popular with the applicant.
No.
Who wanted to start their fence three months ago. So. Okay. Well, any public comments left? Uh, don't think we have any left. And that done, I would say we should adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay.
A second.
That a motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, Trent and Dave.
Very good.